Okay, welcome. Welcome to the regular city council meeting for January the 16th, 2024. Now, you're dating your checks correctly, right? 2024. All right. So I'd like to call this meeting to order. And, um, who's city clerk? Would you call the roll, please?
Absent. Councilmember Maloney.
Here.
Councilmember Schmisher.
Here.
Councilmember Stein.
Here.
Councilmember Tracy.
Here.
Councilmember Worthington.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Hammack.
Here.
Mayor Troutman.
Here.
Okay, is Mr. Craig Cavalier here? Is he here? Would you all then rise for the pleasure of allegiance?
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Okay, thank you. We have two individuals that have asked to speak. And in order of the way they came in, I feel like I should put a seatbelt on, is that not? Is Mr. Fred Tony here? Fred, would you like to come up and address the council and everybody else in the room? Would you state your name and your, um, address, please?
Hi, I'm Fred Tony. My address is 71 Sunrise Mesa Drive here in Canyon City. First of all, I'd like to say Happy New Year and congratulations on our new mayor there. Got a great year ahead of you.
Hasn't been six months. No, just kidding. Is his mic on? Is it? Okay. Thank you.
I gotta get closer. Yeah.
There you go, yeah.
And, uh, you know, I guess one thing I'd like to thank you for is, uh, not, uh, asking the citizens of Canyon City to house a bunch of illegal aliens, like some of the other towns around. But what I want to talk about is, uh, is a noise ordinance. And, uh, here a couple of weeks ago, uh, I just found out, I was a little shocked Canyon City doesn't have a noise ordinance, not anything, zero. And, um, you know, so that's what I'd like today is to propose that the city adopt an ordinance, uh, like most other communities in Colorado. And I brought some samples, um, of larger cities like Denver and Colorado Springs. They've got some great ordinances you can get and several others, the size and close to the size of Canyon City here. But it's all online, it's easy to find. And, uh, you know, Canyon City's not the same town it was when I bought here about 10 years ago. The traffic has increased tremendously. What really instigated my plea here today for a noise ordinance was I was driving down 50, uh, pretty close to the Abbey there and, uh, elderly person that was in front of me. And we were getting close to the stoplight, uh, on Highway 50, and a truck came up beside me in front, beside the car in front of me and let loose some noise, about 105 decibels, I'd estimate, which can damage hearing. I got some information on that as well. But it was a Jake brake. And when he let loose on that Jake brake, the elderly person in front of me went off onto the shoulder, almost into the ditch. And I got to thinking, you know, there is absolutely no reason to use Jake brakes in Canyon City limits. No reason at all. I mean, if you're driving safe, you gear down, you use your brakes, but why are they using Jake brakes, engine brakes, in town? And they use them all the way through town at all hours of the day and night. So, you know, the, the sound's over 105 decibels, by the way. I've done some research on that. It's enough to damage hearing. That's just one example of some of the noise and, uh, and some of the ordinances, but that's easily fixed. You know, no engine brakes within the city limits. The city doesn't even have to measure that. We don't have to ask our police officers to didn't measure that, because once they let loose of it, you know. And you just put a sign at both ends of the, uh, town saying, "No Jake brakes, no engine brakes," $500 sign. Fine. You know, if a trucker uses it, he's got to pay it out of his pocket. If one of them actually has to pay, if words get, get around, you won't have any Jake brakes in Canyon City. That's easy. But if you wanted to measure it, it's easy and cheap. Um, you can buy, on your iPhones, you can get a, a sound to measure decibels, DBA.
Would you, um, could you just hand the ordinance that you brought? You said you had a copy of it?
Yeah, I've got copies of Colorado Springs information, Denver's FAQs, and, uh, I got some copies of my talk here as well.
Can we just give that to the city clerk? It, years ago, that was talked about and the, uh, cost and everything that I understood, I know they have it in Colorado Springs because I have been stopped.
You have a loud muffler?
Well, I had a Corvette that got out of hand. But, um, and I was politely asked to park it or go back to Canyon City. I came back to Canyon City. But, um, in talking to that person, there's calibrations, there's expenses all around at that time. That was a long time ago. So, uh, we may want to go ahead and put that on a, on a discussion at a government meeting or a vision committee meeting. That's where we have that long time discussion. And certainly you got your name and everything, can let you know about that. And you can sit down and listen to what's going on. But at that time, there was always a discussion about the expense of that. And of course, the larger city could afford it, but then the cost of and how many times it had to be calibrated and everything else.
Yeah.
And that's what the officer told me, as well as to go back to Canyon City, which I did. So, uh, but thank you.
Good point. I mean, today, you can buy those IEC standards, uh, meters from $30 to all the way to $300.
Yeah.
So, you know, the costs have gone way down if you wanted to actually monitor those. But when it comes to Jake brakes, you don't need to monitor it. You know when they let loose of that Jake brake.
Yeah, it's two parts. It's that monitoring the noise, but the Jake brake, that's a different type of ordinance, I believe, so we can look into it.
Okay, well, thank you. I won't take any more of your time.
Thank you, Fred. Thank you.
May I comment on that?
Yes, ma'am, go right ahead.
Thanks.
Emily Tracy, there you are, yeah.
Thanks. I, I just wanted to thank you for sending your request. I, as city administrator and others here know, I've been bringing that issue up about Jake brakes several times in the last two years that I've been on council. Because to me, it's an easy thing to do. And even some very small communities prohibit engine brakes within the community. And I just think that is something we could do. We don't have to get into a complicated system where we need more staff to monitor anything. Just say, "No." So that's where I'm just, so thanks for being here.
I'm tired this year, so if you need somebody to monitor.
The, uh, the capability that probably has moved forward quite a bit from when I was talked to in Colorado Springs. I thought we had a sign for no Jake brakes coming out of the quarry, because people on River and Tunnel Drive, they complained about that. I don't know if it's there or not. So, but thank you, we'll have that discussion. Gary Nines. Ninus? Did I say that right?
Nines.
Nines, just between seven and 10, eight and 10.
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
I really don't have much to say other than I wanted you to know that there's some community support for this. And I also want to thank all of you for your service. I know probably there's a couple hundred times it's thankless. But a couple of things I want to do, you don't want to pass 100 laws, I know, but I want to add a thing on his sign that says, "Trucks stay in the right lane on the freeway." You see that in a lot of towns, and I just don't think that would work against us to have the trucks stay in the right lane for, uh, safety purposes. And of course, I want it extended. He didn't mention motorcycles and ATVs, but I didn't notice ATVs were being the problem I thought they'd be this year. But I think we're in a point in life where, uh, privacy is at a premium, and I think also quiet is a premium, because so many people want noise and so many people don't want noise. So somehow you have to reach that accommodation, I think. And that's all I have to say. I appreciate your help.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thanks, Gary. I would like to put that on a, a time, I mean, I would like to do that. If that's okay with everybody, Ryan? What do you think?
We can look for a, a general government meeting and, and put that on. Probably, it's gonna be late spring probably at this point. But, uh, we, we can inform, uh, both Mr. Nines and Mr. Tony, uh, when that meeting is.
All right, we'll do that. Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Did you raise your hand? You can't.
I've got a, I've got a button.
Button, okay. I knew at this. It's been years since I've done this, so be careful. Any council members would like to make any comments at this time? Okay, go ahead, Kathy?
I just wanted to... Turn on my mic. Uh, I would like to send a shout out to one of our local police sergeants, William Ray. He lives up in Dawson Ranch, and he's, we have a camping place, uh, in one of the rural areas of Dawson Ranch that has sprung up. And I must say, the person who's doing this has put in quite a nice campsite with a nice A-frame and the whole bit. But anyway, Sergeant Ray is on top of it, and if there's anybody that's either out there in Dawson Ranch or in the audience here, they are working on it and they are trying to, uh, eliminate that situation. So thank you.
Is that tongue in cheek? No. Okay. Anyone else?
Do you have a hand up on Zooms, Mr. Mayor?
Oh, Amy! There you are. Full color.
Thanks so much, Mr. Mayor. Um, I just wanted to give council a quick report. I think many of the council members were in attendance at the January 3rd Red Canyon Trails Open House. We had a great turnout, um, and a lot of great public engagement and discussion about the way forward for that trail system. We are planning to have our next Red Canyon Committee meeting actually up at Red Canyon Park, and we'll make sure that that's well advertised so that folks who are interested in, in kind of seeing specifically what we're looking at are able to attend, um, kind of boots on the ground actually up there. And then we'll also be engaging with the, the folks who are representing the equestrian interest, including those at Red Canyon Stables. So hopefully, uh, still moving forward rather expeditiously and, and per the terms of the, um, ordinance establishing the committee, we'll be getting a plan to council for approval, um, hopefully sometime in February. But still have a couple more things that we'll need to do in advance of that to make sure that we're fully taking into account the, the public interest and public opinion. Thanks.
Thank you, Amy. Mr. Hammack?
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, the, uh, we do have several other meetings coming up. Uh, we do have a Canyon City Energy Franchise Committee meeting, uh, which is next Monday. Um, one of the things we're going to be talking about is potential for solar lighting on the East Highway 50 lighting control plan. Uh, there is a water committee meeting coming up. That is the Monday, the 22nd, um, the Energy Franchise Committee at 10:00 AM in these chambers. There's a water committee meeting coming up, the 31st of January, uh, that starts at 2:00 in these chambers. And then tomorrow, uh, we have a US-50 East Access Control Plan, um, topic for our Vision Committee meeting that starts at 5:00 PM here in these chambers. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Then at this time, I'd like to invite Butch Bachelor to come forward.
Good evening, Mayor. Mayor Pro Tim, council members. Once again, it's my pleasure to come before you to help recognize some of our employees who are experiencing employment milestones with the city. Uh, this evening, we have five employees that we're recognizing. Uh, first one has, has become our custom. I'll give you a little background about the employee, uh, and then I'll turn it over to their department director or supervisor to tell you a little bit more on a more personal level about the individual. Uh, the first person is John Hegg. On January 28th, 2019, John was hired as a maintenance worker in the Parks Department. On September 21st, 2020, John was advanced to Equipment Operator, Parks Maintenance Worker. And then on March 6th of 2021, John was selected to fill the Parks Department Arborist Technician, Senior Position. And I'll let Leo say a few words about John.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. Rex sends his regards. He would have been here tonight to do this himself. I know he would have enjoyed very much to be here to do this himself. Parks Department and the city, uh, think very highly of John. We thank him for his service. He's been one of the constants in the forestry department since he came here. Came in not to work in forestry, but took a lot of initiative and passion on himself to learn that role. It takes a lot of pride in what he does, and he does a great job for the city. And I think with that, that's about all I have for John.
Could I just ask? Butch, I would, you tell the audience as well as Leo what you do for the city?
What Leo does for the city?
What you do. What's your position at the city?
Well, I'm the human, human resources director for the city.
Okay. And Leo? Go ahead.
Leo, what do you do?
What?
Lots of things. I'm the Public Works Director for the city.
Okay, well, we, we never knew. You were there, so, no, I'm just, thank you. Go ahead.
Absolutely. Sorry about that. Uh, next up, we have Mark Mazur. On January 2nd, 2019, Mark was hired by the City of Canyon City to be the Water Treatment Plant Maintenance Foreman, a position he currently holds.
So, uh, I'll just want to commend Mark. He's one of the hardest working people that we have on staff. Um, his breadth of knowledge is just something to be also commended. He's worked on things like drywall. He can service a 250 horsepower pump. You know, he's, uh, led projects where, like tank coating. Uh, he has an employee, so he has to be a manager, and he wears so many different hats, and he just does a really fantastic job. So, like I say, it's something to really be commended. Thank you.
And Travis, uh, how long is he? I didn't hear how long he's with his department.
He's celebrating his fifth year.
Fifth year, thank you. Thank you.
Uh, next up, unfortunately, the next employee couldn't be with us this evening due to other commitments, but we still, did still want to recognize him. That's Morgan Rockmore. Morgan was originally hired as a police officer in the Police Department on January 28th, 2019. On September 19th of 2022, Morgan was selected for one of the detective positions in the Police Department. And I'll give Chief Schick an opportunity to tell you a little bit about Morgan.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, I appreciate Butch recognizing, uh, all these employees. Five years is a, is a milestone for us. Uh, Mr. Rockmore gets his personalized badge, uh, following this recognition. Uh, he apologizes for not being able to be with us tonight, uh, but nonetheless, we, we felt it was important to recognize Morgan. He's, uh, truly a, a bright star with the PD. He's a training officer. He, he was a leader in patrol, and now he's, uh, matriculated to the detective role, and he's certainly, uh, he's certainly blazing a path there. So we're awfully proud of, uh, Morgan and certainly glad, uh, he's on our team and look forward to about 15 or 20 more of those years.
Thank you, Chief.
And now we're moving into some individuals who are celebrating their 20th year with the city. First up, we have Judge Allen, Larry Allen. He's been with municipal court judge since January 1st of 2004. Uh, after he was appointed to that position by the Canyon City Council, he has served in this role since his original appointment.
I think, I think we may have got our wires crossed. We'll, uh, make sure to try and get Judge Allen here for another day.
All right. And then we have Travis Payne. Travis was hired on January 12th, 2004 as a utility worker for the Water Department. On January 14th, 2006, Travis was appointed a Water Treatment Plant Trainee. On September 28th, 2007, Travis was appointed as a Water Treatment Plant Operator C. Then on September 9th, he was appointed a Water Treatment Plant Operator B. On August 24th, 2009, Travis became a Water Treatment Plant Operator A. And then on October 27th, 2014, Travis was appointed to the Chief Plant Operator for the Canyon City Water Treatment Plant. And on September 27th, 2021, Travis was selected as the Water Superintendent for the City of Canyon City.
I'll let Leo say a few words there.
Thank you. Um, I'll keep it quick. Travis asked me not to say a lot. I do really appreciate Travis's experience. I think just listening to the course that he's taken from where he started to where he is speaks to everything he's done. Um, he's worked his way from the entry level up to the top of the Water Department, which is a huge asset to him and the city. He can, he can relate with the frontline crews that do the job, and he can relate with the people at City Hall and all of you. You know, any of you that have had the pleasure to attend a Water Committee meeting has, you know, seen how well he navigates all that atmosphere and the controversy that can come with that. Really just a great asset to the city, great asset to me personally in getting up to speed here in Colorado, and I really appreciate having him around.
Now, if I could get to, get council to, uh, assist me here, if you could come down in front of the podium, I'll get all of our recogni, recognized up, and we'll get a group
Okay, thank you all. It's so refreshing to do that. It's great. Um, all right, I'd ask the city administrator to review the agenda and the consent agenda, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Item 8A is to authorize the mayor to appoint the following people. Uh, Ryan Stevens, the city administrator, Hoffman Parker, Wilson Carberry, PC, as the city attorneys, and Larry Allen as the City of Canyon City Municipal Judge. 8B approves minutes for regular city council meeting on January 2nd, the general government meeting on January 3rd, uh, the special meeting on January 2nd, which was council orientation, and January 3rd, which was the Red Canyon Open House. 8C reappoints Chris Jenkins and Mildred Wentz to the Historic Preservation Commission. 8D authorizes the city administrator to sign a professional services agreement with Western State's Land Services. 8E authorizes the city administrator to sign a Flock ALPR camera contract. 8F authorizes the mayor to sign a design-build contract with Hammer's Construction for the new Parks Maintenance Facility. 8G awards 12, uh, bid 1224 MDTs to Tel Repco and an amount not to exceed $117,279. 8H awards bid 1524 Bravo 5I Street Sweeper to Neverest Equipment Company and an amount not to exceed $218,528.12. 8I awards bid 1624 Parks Work Truck to Daniel's Long Chevrolet and an amount not to exceed 8J awards bid 1724 a 2024 Chevy Colorado Water Distribution to Daniel's Long Chevrolet and an amount not to exceed $36,855. 8K awards bid 1824 a 2024 Colorado 4x4 Crew Cab Work Truck to Delenbach Motors and an amount not to exceed $35,627. 8L is to receive and file a monthly budget summary, and 8M is to receive and file cash disbursements and P-card disbursements.
Thank you, Ryan. Are there any additions or corrections at this time? Then I would ask for a motion, um, from the city council to approve the agenda and consent Would you like to make that motion? Mr. Hammack?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I move that we approve the agenda and consent agenda as presented.
Second? Kathy, thank you, Kathy. Is there any discussion on that motion? Andrea, did you?
Mr. Mayor, you have a hand up on Zoom.
Oh, Amy? I'm sorry.
No worries.
You don't have a button at your house, do you? Go ahead, sorry.
No worries. Because I'm on Zoom, I, I realized that we have another participant on Zoom, and I believe that they might be from the Flock camera system. I'm not sure if we wanted to, um, to speak a little bit more about that, given that we have a representative perhaps from that entity.
Would, uh, Chief, would you like to come up and do a brief explanation of the Flock camera?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Good evening again, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Um, we have with us Kristin. She is a Flock representative. A little bit about Flock. Flocks is, Flock Safety is an American company that sells automated license plate readers, uh, reader technology. The technology allows law enforcement to expedite criminal investigations by searching, uh, for vehicles related to criminal activity, uh, in real time. We're asking council to approve the purchase of 15 cameras to be strategically placed throughout the city by Flock to leverage your local law enforcement in discovering vehicles associated with crime in Canyon City. I'm very excited that we're considering joining, uh, the nearly 40 other agencies across Colorado in the exchange of criminal-related information to both prevent and respond crime. I, uh, I had occasion to, uh, speak with Chief Johnson out of Salida, and, uh, I'll just, I'll read you what he sent me this evening as we had a conversation. Quote, he said, "We have had outstanding success with Flock. I would call it the single best piece of equipment that we've purchased in Salida during my career," and he's been there for a little while. "I think every agency, agency should get them. They're not only invaluable to alerting people on the go, but the most used tool my investigators have at the moment. So far, I really haven't seen any negative from them." Um, we're real excited about this opportunity. Uh, we have recently, in the last, uh, year and a half or so, we, uh, we purchased and, and got the Axon Dash 3 cameras in all of our police cruisers following a, a police officer-involved shooting, um, right after I first got here. Um, and, uh, this technology, uh, accompanied by those Dash cams expands that, uh, the LPR, the License Plate Reader technology, from the fixed cameras to our mobile cameras, um, virtually giving us, you know, a, a unbelievable amount of information related to, uh, vehicles related to criminal activity. I am here to answer any questions that you might have, and, uh, as I said before, we also have Kristin from Flock who can probably explain the system far better than I could.
While we're waiting for, for Kristin, I, I just want to clarify that, uh, we will have a separate license agreement for the Dash cameras. So that is not included in what's being approved tonight.
So you had the Flock and the cameras and the Axion. They're two different things. Okay. And the Axion is mounted in the patrol car?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
It is, yeah.
The Flock are stationary at undisclosed areas?
Yes, sir.
Okay. It just, it, you know, they moved around, the Flock cameras or, um, just, do you know what I mean?
Kristin, do you want to answer that? Are you there?
Hello, yes, can you hear me okay?
Can.
Can.
Wonderful. Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for your time. Um, so the Flock cameras are stationary. Um, we do have another product that is, um, mobile, however, the cameras that your chief and the department are looking at are stationary.
And the maintenance on those cameras, they, they go with the contract that we're signing, or we would do?
Yes.
Yes, that's a great question. So with Flock Safety, you are really purchasing the service. So with Flock Safety, you are really purchasing the service and we own and maintain the cameras and the hardware and we update software. We proactively look at your camera's health so that alleviates that burden from your city officials, your city staff, and Flock will take care of that. So you're really paying for that service and your data.
Okay. Is there a terminal, and you don't have to answer these questions, but it's curious, is there a terminal at headquarters or someplace that you view these? I'm, is it recorded and then you look at it sort of, tell me what that is.
Kristin, you want to explain the process?
Yeah, explain the process. Thank you. Very good, Chief. Thank you.
Yes, so what it is, is we have our stationary cameras that are motion activated and when a vehicle passes by one of the cameras, it will take a still image of the rear of that vehicle, so capturing any vehicle details, license plate number, et cetera. That information is then uploaded into the AWS cloud where it is encrypted end-to-end and maintained securely there until your department, as part of a criminal investigation, would access one of those images. And so it's stored there, it's a still image, it is not video.
Thank you. Mr. Hammerick?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The, could you tell us a little bit more about that? The, the, really, the question is the query part of that. How does, how does the query part of that work? And the, and perhaps, Chief, you might tell us, who, who in the department would be authorized to make the queries?
The authorized persons to make the queries would be our sworn personnel.
All sworn personnel?
Yes, sir.
And then I'll, I'll add a little bit to that and circling back a little bit to, to provide more context to the previous question. When a vehicle that is wanted passes by one of our cameras, an alert will be distributed to an officer and depending upon how the department sets that up, an officer can access that information on their mobile turn, terminal in their patrol vehicles. We have a mobile app, but again, that's really dependent upon how the department wants to set that up. And then, I'm sorry, if you could, the question, as far as the search query, Flock does require a search reason, and so typically it's a case number, department report number that is required to input before they're able, that user is able to access that information, and that creates an audit trail.
Thank you.
And that standard's pretty consistent with NCIC and CCIC.
The, my other question is that our CRCA 911 Center is getting new software. And is there any interface between what you provide and the 911 Center that would also hit their system?
If you're able to provide a bit more detail, I can certainly take that, kind of what the software is, I can take that back and that's something that I can ask our team about that specific integration and be happy to share that information with Chief so he can provide that to you.
It's Tyler, but sure, absolutely.
Emily, did you have a question?
Oh, thanks. My questions have been addressed.
Okay, thank you. Any more questions for the Chief? Amy?
Thank you. My question is actually for Kristin. I'm wondering how other communities track the effectiveness or the increase in efficacy from using Flock and if you have any of those statistics at hand?
So that's a really great question, and we have found that councils really take into consideration as far as a return on the investment, recovered stolen property, number of recovered stolen vehicles, if there are additional charges or additional offenses associated with a, a vehicle that has, that is wanted as far, part of a criminal investigation and if there are any property that is recovered from that vehicle. That is one way to measure it. In addition, we, we do see councils measure that return on investment by taking a look at how crimes, homicides are impacted, that getting efficient information into the right hands of your officers to be able to effectively pursue an investigation. In addition to, we have also really seen impacts in recovering missing vulnerable persons, so that's another element to consider. And then in addition, really taking a comparison of potentially before Flock was implemented, looking at numbers there as far as how long investigations have taken and then comparing that to once Flock cameras are installed, really how much that's impacting that efficiency.
Thank you for that. Chief, do you think that that's realistic or practicable for CCPD to track any of those, whether it's length of time of investigation shortening or number of recovered stolen vehicles or some of the other measures that Kristin has mentioned? Do you think any of those would be feasible for CCPD to track?
Yes, ma'am, Councilwoman Schmisher. I, I would, I would not have been so confident before we recently got the crime analyst that we hired, but Sterling is certainly a beacon of light for us and, and he's working on a, a number of different levels, you know, collating information for us. So I'm fairly confident that we can, we can tell a story through numbers with regards to Flock and its usefulness.
Great, thank you so much. And if I could add just a little bit to that, Flock does have what we call an insights dashboard, and that is a dashboard that is provided to the administrators of the system, so your police department, and it really helps them to be able to see those impacts and return on investment and measuring crime patterns.
That's fantastic to hear. Thanks for sharing that. It's great to know that, that that's part of the service and not an additional duty that would be assigned to the crime analyst. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Amy. Emily, did you, did I, go ahead.
You can push my button off or whatever you need to do.
I'm new at this, by the way. Any more discussion? Any questions, comments from council? Amy? Then we had a, wait a second, right? Would you call the role, please?
Councilmember Maloney?
Aye.
Schmisher?
Aye.
Stein?
Aye.
Tracy?
Aye.
Worthington?
Aye.
Mayor, per Tim Hammerick?
Aye.
Okay, thank you all. I now ask the City Administrator to give his staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. We have a couple of members of our police department in the audience. I do want to recognize both Chief Schick and Commander John Sabatino. Both were respondents, actually first respondents in a manhunt that happened a weekend or so ago. They were the, the first two officers on scene once one of these subjects was located. And I just want to thank both of them for their service to the community and leading, leading from the front. You know, policing's a team effort, but it's nice to know that we have leaders like Chief Schick and Commander Sabatino that are out there doing the work that our officers are doing on a daily basis as well. And both you gentlemen, it's appreciated. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Yes, our community is very well-served.
Thank you, Ryan. Right. Couple other items from the administrator report that I, I want to bring up. You know, we received our payment for the 2022-2023 lease here for the Royal Gorge Company. We, that total was $3,153,504. That is over budget for this year. That helps backfill some of the shortage from, from the previous year. Can't stress enough how important it is to have the bridge as an asset for the community and how much that offsets property taxes. If, if we didn't have the bridge providing revenue to the community, you know, to provide the same level of service, the mill levy would have to be almost six times what it is today in, in order to provide that same level of service. So, you know, it's, it's an extremely important asset to the community and it does offset our tax revenue quite a bit by having it here in the community. And then the other item is the Rhodes Avenue Project. We continue to see delays from the Rhodes Avenue Project. We are currently, the contractor is working with, it took almost a year, year and a half to receive our permits from the railroad. We're now dealing with the railroad inspectors who, in their opinion, they, they want to send two of the three permits back to the railroad for reinspection. So we're going to have to go through this process again. We don't know how long it's going to take. It's hard to put a time on it. They won't give us a timeline. The, the good news is that the permit that they have accepted is the first permit that needs to, that's the first line that needs to be worked on, so we're going to continue to work until we can't work anymore, or the contractor's going to continue to work until we can't work anymore. But it, there is a very strong possibility that this work is going to continue until the, into the next off-season of the ditch. So we will work as far as we can this year. We'll button it up again for, when, once irrigation turns on. We can't do any work once the irrigation is on, and then we can take it back after, after the ditches turn off. Public Works Director Leo Evans is here. Leo, do you want to add anything regards, regarding the Rhodes Avenue Project?
No, I think you covered it really well in the administrator report. It's certainly unfortunate. It's certainly something we work on every day in staff in the Engineering Department. We don't have a lot of control over Union Pacific Railroad and their timeframe and when they will review things and how important they think this project is, regardless of how important we think it is. But we do continue to work on it every day and are doing our best to get as much done as we can in the windows of opportunity we have.
Mr. Hammerick?
Thank you. A question on that, perhaps you can share a little bit of the specific deficiencies or objections that the railroad has? I mean, I'm not asking for, you know, a public flogging, but it would be nice to understand what, what, what they're, from their perspective, what they see the problems as.
Yeah, I'll, I'll let Leo answer that question. It, it sounds to me that there were items that were maybe in the area of influence that were not looked at initially when it first went to the, to the Union Pacific Permit Tax.
That's correct. The railroad focused their effort on the jack and boars that go underneath the line. There are a couple of sanitary sewer manholes and water main excavations that are outside of the railroad right-of-way, but the excavation's likely to touch the edges of the right-of-way in the railroad inspector's opinion, and they've referred that back to the railroad to make sure they are in agreement with the edges of that excavation touching their right-of-way.
Thank you.
Sounds real tetchy-feely. Sorry. Anything else?
Happy to answer any questions about the rest of the written report.
Amy?
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Troutman. Administrator Stevens, I noticed in your report that it did mention that we've had a little bit of an uptick in attrition in the police department. Certainly, I think we have a lot to commend the police department for and a lot to, to be proud of them for, and I'm, I'm curious as to what steps or measures we're considering taking to ensure that we're starting to combat or starting to mitigate that uptick in attrition that we're seeing. Thanks.
Yeah, you know, I think we're, we're, and I meet with Chief Schick weekly and this is always one of the topics that we talk about is recruiting. And one of the challenges that we have is that, you know, it takes six months to bring a new officer on board, longer if you include the background checks and things like that. And it only takes two weeks' notice to, to lose an officer. So backfilling from that standpoint is really hard. The, the police department's taking a stronger effort on attending police academies, trying to find additional candidates to, to get into the hiring pipe, pipeline. We're continuing to work through that. You know, we're seeing that agencies like Pueblo are offering more money. One of the things that we've talked about in the past and we're working towards implementation this year is, early this year, is the Career Development Plan to offer those, you know, those additional incentives to, to the officers for completing their training and community service and, and things like that that we expect through that Career Development Plan. So there's a lot of work going into it. Unfortunately, there are no easy answers.
Okay, Emily?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. I, just to add to that, I, I'm guessing that there is a lot more than just the pay that's a factor in hiring police officers. And I'm reminded, I, I recently watched part of a debate of the two candidates for mayor in Pueblo, and the challenging candidate was criticizing the incumbent mayor there for having a fair, I can't quote the numbers, but a fairly high percentage of open positions in the police department there in spite of efforts that they've made there in recruiting and retention. So I'm, I'm kind of guessing it's a broader problem and it's probably impacting a lot of agencies.
It, it is. I, I believe the Pueblo Police Department has somewhere north of 70 vacancies right now. You know, we're, we're lucky from that standpoint that, you know, we, we have, you know, five vacancies from our, our regular total, but we also have five new vacancies because of the, the COPS grant, so we have 10 positions that we need to fill. You know, we, it, it certainly is a pay thing. Housing, you know, finding affordable or attainable housing for nurses, teachers, police officers, firefighters is, is a struggle and, you know, that's one of the things that we've been working forward toward and, you know, quite a bit through economic development and community development in, in this community. So, you know, there, there are certainly a ton of variables that go into it.
Thank you, Ryan. Anyone else? Thank you, Leo. Appreciate it. Any other questions or comments? If not, I'm going to move on to the next agenda. It's an introduction and adoption by title only of Resident, Resolution 3 Series 2024 entitled, "Resolution Establishing and Establishing an Irrigation Lateral Replacement Program in the City of Canyon City." I'd invite the City Administrator to give us a staff report.
And I will turn it over to Leo to give the report on Resolution 3.
Thank you. This resolution is brought around about by some problems we've noticed in the last year. Irrigation laterals by ordinance are the responsibility of the property owner in front of, whose house they are in front of. A lot of property owners aren't aware of that. We have a lot of property owners that maybe don't have ditch shares or don't, you know, utilize that water and don't see the benefit or the necessity in investing in that maintenance and upkeep. It often results in flooding, street flooding, property flooding, people not being able to access their water, you know, a number of problems that degrade the quality of life around Canyon City. So we drafted a program very similar to our sidewalk replacement program in the city that can offer residents some financial assistance in repairing and replacing those irrigation laterals that are located within the right-of-way and already have or have a high potential to create flooding, cause unsafe conditions, or, you know, otherwise degrade the quality of life. We did present this, outline of this program at the November 29th Water Committee Meeting. I believe we invited all of the primary irrigation companies in town at that time as well to provide comment. I know we had at least three of them there, I believe, if I recall. They were all relatively supportive of this program at the time. The Water Committee was supportive of the program at this time. We did include a preliminary line item in the 2024 budget of $20,000 for this program. I believe the sidewalk replacement program budget's about $35,000 a year, so it's a little bit less than that. We don't know how well it'll be received. We don't know how well it'll be utilized, but we wanted to offer the residents another tool to try to improve the quality of life around Canyon City and reduce the impact of unmaintained and failing irrigation laterals in town.
Emily?
I think that's left over from the last item.
Yeah, just, thank you so much.
I have nothing.
Any questions? Leo? Well, then you don't get to talk. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
All right, so it's, I am the, the city's representative to three ditches in which the city owns shares, and each of the- and each of the annual meetings have occurred in the last couple of weeks, and so I have heard a lot of feedback from people on, who own shares in ditches, about how much this would help them. And what a lot of people don't understand is, this is a rural community, it's a ranching community, and ever since 1863, we've had ditches, irrigation ditches that go through this town. We wouldn't have all our trees if it weren't for these ditches, so they're an important part of our community. And the main part of the ditch, the ditch companies are responsible for, they maintain. The laterals that go out to different places that need irrigation, those are not the responsibility of the ditch company. And under Colorado water law, which is Byzantine, as our attorney can attest, whether or not you own shares, whether or not you're getting water from those shares, if you buy a house and you don't even realize that that is an irrigation ditch that you bought a house on, you're responsible for maintaining that lateral. If you don't, people on down the end are not going to get their water, but this is, it is water law. And so, and if you take water out, you don't own a share, or you're not paying your maintenance on the share, that's a felony, and there is a water commissioner who will cite you for it. So it's, it's a complicated thing, and from all the meetings I've been to involving people who are on the ditches, that is the biggest problem that comes up all the time, it's, it's never-ending, is that neighbors trying to, to work together to get debris out of those laterals, and so having this program is going to be an incentive for everybody along those laterals to help, to pitch in, and I think this is a great thing that we're doing. Thank you.
Thank you. Amy? Did you have a question?
Thank you, Mayor Treppen. I just had one question about the sidewalk replacement program, and if we have any lessons learned from how that's gone, that we are planning to implement with this new kind of program that's been modeled after that, and then I have one minor proposed edit to the resolution.
I don't know that I've been here long enough to comment on any lessons learned from the sidewalk program. I believe in the one year I've been here, it's been underutilized, we haven't been able to use all of the money we budget. We don't, we don't have a lot of people deciding that it's a good investment to take advantage of, so I think we need to revisit that, if that's something we want to make sure we're utilizing to the fullest, but that would be the biggest lesson learned for me. I want to see this program be successful, I want to see it be used. I think it's hard to draw the line on how much incentive the city offers to do that. I'd rather err a little bit on the conservative side and find out later that we need to maybe sweeten that a little bit more, to make sure it gets utilized and make sure we're making that investment, but I think that would be one of the big things I'd be looking for in the future if we choose to move forward with both of those programs.
Absolutely. I guess I also just wonder if there's an opportunity for more, more public information campaign around the sidewalk replacement program, as well as this newly-proposed program. I think both are very, very needed, and something that would benefit our community greatly if they were to be fully utilized. So I wonder if part of the issue is just folks aren't, aren't aware enough that these programs exist, so just food for thought. In terms of the one proposed edit, I would just recommend that we spell out the DPW reference, it's the only reference in the ordinance, or in the resolution, so I think it would be appropriate to make sure that it's clear as to what we're referring to, the Department of Public Works. Thanks.
I think jumping off what you had said was maybe the, was the information sent out, or can it be sent out to the presidents or the secretaries of the ditch companies? I think there's about eight of them, five or eight?
We, we did, we invited them to the, that Water Committee meeting.
Okay, because then they can disseminate whenever people complain, well, here's an opportunity. And I, too, I see a lot of sidewalks, and I tell people that we have a program to help me out with this, and for the life of me, I don't know if, maybe it's a lot of work, or maybe you're just a hard guy to deal with, Leo, I don't know. No, just kidding. But I think this is a great, I read the ordinance, and I, or the, yeah, the ordinance, the resolution, and I, I think just from my business standpoint, it would be something I would definitely tell people, because it's on your title work, that you have an easement for a ditch, and they should know about that, so, thank you. Any other questions? Okay, then I would entertain a motion. Oh, Mr. Hammerick?
Thank you very much. Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve Resolution Three, Series of Twenty-Twenty-Four, with the provision that in Bullet Number Four, under the "Now Therefore Be It Resolved," that we spell out the Department of Public Works instead of abbreviating that DPW.
Okay. Can we do? Second? Okay. Any other discussions? No, I guess we wouldn't do discussions on that, we did, didn't we? Just call the roll? Let's call the roll.
Councilmember Maloney?
Aye.
Schmisher?
Aye.
Stein?
Aye.
Tracy?
Aye.
Worthington?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Hammerick?
Aye.
Great, thank you all. So the next regular city council meeting will be February the fifth, 2024, right here, and of course, if you have any questions, you have representatives here, and the mayor is available sometimes. No, just kidding, but anyway. And we thank you for coming, and we will try to work the schedule and let you know in that sound ordinance, okay? Again, thanks. Thank you for coming, we're adjourned.